Clerk, vote, could you do the roll, please?
Councilmember Brown.
Present.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Pally Van Ooglu.
Present.
Councilmember Garza.
Here.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Eight members present.
Thank you. Next, we are on to the minutes. Vice President Carter.
Yes, I make a motion to approve the April 21st minutes as presented.
Okay, proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, passes unanimously. Next, we are on to public comment on agenda items. If anyone in the public in the audience would like to speak, please come up to the podium, and can you state your name for the record? You'll have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Brian Jewell, calling about the situation that we have along MLK here with the accident that we had the other night. And we live right off of MLK, lived there for the last 13 years. That is a residential area. Speed limit along there is 45 miles. It used to be 35. They switched it to 45. Now people are going 65. And like you heard the other night, they're doing 70, 75 with this drag racing that goes on. Happens every night of the week. I stood out there mowing my yard yesterday, watched three guys take off from MLK in Mount Hope, going towards the bridge, squawking them. Going, they had to, by the time they hit frigging the Plasky Street, they had to have been going 75. So what is the city of Lansing going to do to recognize what they can do for the MLK area? It's been that way for, since COVID. Ever since COVID hit, I mean, when COVID was around and everybody was locked down, we'd sit out there on our front porch in the summertime, watch motorcycles take off, had to have been doing 90 down, passing cops, passing cops. And the cops couldn't do anything about it because of COVID. Now, the city of Lansing, with Bacchus up there now, he's not, I here saw something that he did in, on his little page that he did the other night about that accident. Everything's getting charged as a misdemeanor. Really? These guys almost killed people. And he's, they're getting charged with a misdemeanor? What's going on with Lansing? I mean, if you look and see what the rating is Lansing now with crime throughout the United States, Lansing's up in there. And you talk to some of these other counties, these police officers, they know, they think Lansing's a joke. We go to Eaton County, Clinton County, I've been through some of those, Chiwasi County, they hear about it. The Lansing police, they're not allowed to do anything anymore because of liability? So what, they just let people run free, all these crimes? If you ever went and sat in a courtroom up here, that, a courtroom, they give PRs to everybody. Doesn't matter what you do, assault, less than murder, a PR bond, the guy's walking. You know, and I've talked to some of the police officers, that's why they don't do it. They get caught, these guys get picked up the night before, by the time these police officers are clocking out the next morning to do their paperwork, the guy's walking out right in front of them. He'd be getting bonded out already. So what does Lansing plan on doing here? Is there a suggestion from anybody? I mean, like I said, that MLK, the speed limit needs to be dropped down there. That's a residential area. If that was in your neighborhood, would you want people going 45 down through your neighborhood when it's a residential area and you have kids out playing? I don't think that's necessary. Lansing's got to get on top of this. Between the crime and all these thugs out racing up and down MLK, it's got, time's got to change. Quit worrying about the liability and do what's good for the law and the rest of the people in this, in the city of Lansing.
Thank you. Thank you. Do we have anyone else from the public that wishes to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, we are going to move on to our Agenda Item 5 presentations. We've got Department Budget Presentations. First up is going to be the Public Media. We've got Jason here for the Public Media. If you want to come on down with anybody else that you've got. If you can make sure your green light is on and begin whenever you are ready, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Cost and City Council for having me here tonight. I see and appreciate you and the work you do in this chamber and beyond in the city, and I know it has challenges, so thank you. I hope that you are familiar with me from running around in the field and around town, but just in case, my name is Jason Gabriel. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Community Media. I run the Lansing Public Media Center, City TV Channel, and the community TV station out of the North Capitol Ramp across from LCC. I did receive some questions from the body beforehand, and would like to address them now if you don't have any objections. The first question that I received was, what is the difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? Changes to our budget from current to the proposed entail a parking budget allocation that was added due to our location change from the South Washington office complex, where we did not pay for parking. So parking was added to our budget to accommodate. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? Our department has experienced an increase in responsibilities to include more commission and committee meetings live on City TV and streaming as well as added, as well as adding the ability to virtually comment in all of our live meetings. Are there programs that you've done in the past that you've not included in this budget? No, there's not. Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? No rate or fee increases. Are there any major equipment purchases that are proposed in this budget? Nothing included in this budget, but we will be looking for funding in the future to update the city's main video services to maintain security and preserve functionality. Our main video services are running an older operating system, and they are no longer supported by the local vendors that we once utilized. I got asked, what were the impacts 311 has taken on your department and staff? None. We run scheduling and troubleshooting for our field technology through our phones, and we do not utilize 311. Are there any eliminated, combined, or contracting of positions in your budget, and if so, provide specifics? There are not. How many employees have left your department in the past year, and how many were due to retirement? None have left. We still have the same great crew. What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what were the savings? Our operational efficiencies have been increasing as we continue to cross-train more staff with expanded skill sets to cover more types of production and also to cover more types of meetings. And we're right now able to accomplish more with a comparable budget. Are you able to perform all necessary department responsibilities with your budget? Yes. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? We've begun to increase our participation and membership outreach to students, veterans, and returning citizens, and we're always looking for more opportunities to engage more people in video productions and to create their own content from Lansing. Who were the top two largest vendors for your departments, and when were their last bid? Our two largest vendors are B&amp;H Photo Video, who last bid with the city of Lansing, I believe, 18 months ago and won bids, and also Comcast, who had previously bid with IT about 18 months ago. Have you budgeted for receipt of federal grant funds? No, we have not received any federal grants in this budget. What impact has the new BSNA had on your department, and what issues have you run into? Have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? The change to BSNA as a vendor for the city of Lansing has had challenges. The customization and configurations for our uses are now working well, but we had initial issues with our staff not having the right columns present on staff time cards, and our timekeepers not having permissions and access to the right batch of information for payroll. HR, IT, and BSNA support teams have helped to get us back where everything is working as they should. I'd like to thank you for having me here tonight for this, to present this information, and if you've not been to our current facility, we would love to have you come check us out and take a tour of the Lansing Public Media Center. It's at the intersection of Chiwasi and Capitol. We specifically have a community-oriented podcast studio for people to make shows and programs in that we would love to welcome your involvement in. If there's any more questions, please.
All right, I'm going to turn it over to the internal auditor first.
Thank you, President Cost. I think the only one question I might have is the parking. How was this parking, um, calculated?
I looked this up right before the meeting. For Office of Community Media, there are nine full and part-time employees at about $123 per month each. That amount annualized over the course of the year rounded up to the nearest 500 is the 13,500. So the estimate should be pretty spot on there. We are, we've been working on reviewing that in fine detail, and we might have an update that we'll share with you that council can see any variances and determine whether or not they want to have any changes to other departments, but that's the breakdown for Office of Community Media.
Okay, thank you. That's it, President Cost.
Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you for being here, Jason. Just wanted to say I really appreciate the presentation. You answered all of the questions thoroughly, and I have no further questions, so thank you for being here prepared.
Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other questions? Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President, and thanks for being here this evening. Just two questions, one you may have already answered, I just didn't hear it, but the first one is the insurance and bonds. Can you explain why that went up roughly $10,000?
Might I defer to you, Jake?
Yep, that's a citywide allocation. I believe it's a percentage of personnel expenditures, and that was something that was updated across all departments. Otherwise, there's about a 2% increase citywide to those costs.
Okay, all right, thank you. And then the other one, I didn't hear you answer. What impact has 311 taken on your department's staff? Did you, did you cover that in your question?
I did. It's that we don't utilize the service, and primarily it's because we do our calendar scheduling as well as troubleshooting for a lot of technology in the field. We do that through the phones primarily.
Thank you. Thanks. Sorry.
Okay, do we have any further questions for Jason? Seeing none, we want to thank you for being here and have a good evening.
Appreciate it. Thank you. You folks have a nice one night.
All right, next, we are going to move on to public service. We've got Andy Kilpatrick and team, if you want to come on down. I don't have to tell you how to do this.
Since the microphone is pointing towards Jeremiah.
We're not, there we, we were on. So thank you, President Cost, and Vice President Carter, and council members for the opportunity to respond to some questions regarding our proposed 2026 budget. A little feedback there. So, starting with the difference from our proposed budget to the current fiscal year, primarily our increases are inflationary. Now, the exception is, we have large capital expenditures in our budget, so you will see some significant changes there. There are also changes in 311 and IT allocations, as well as indirect costs and, you know, others that are, that are associated, retirement and other thing fringes that get added to our budget. The capital requests are obviously significant, and those are detailed. You have the capital budget in, you know, pages E7 and E8. It includes 10 million in local streets, a million dollars in sidewalks, and just for reference, a mile of local streets costs us about $750,000, and major street is about a million and a half. A mile of sidewalk is like $330,000 or so, a little over $300,000. I will point out, if you are looking at your budget on both the major street and local street, which is page C53 and 54, we are transferring a significant amount of money from fund balance in the major street to the local street, and that's, we're able to do that because we have an asset management plan, so it looks like we are increasing both the major street expenditure amount and the local street. And I guess from an accounting perspective, that's true, but we are not increasing both projects in the major and projects in the local. That money is coming from the major street to the local street. So it's really only increasing the actual project amount in the local street, it's just the funding comes from the major street account. The other change is, there's a request to add a technician position for permits that will deal with both sidewalk projects, sidewalk complaints, and trash in the right of way. And so if that's added, that person, not only that person, because we have our technicians right now that are dedicated to that, but those additional hours will be primarily spent on those activities. Are there changes in services your department is responsible for? If so, why? Except with the previous, the question or change with the technician, there are no changes that we have proposed. Are there programs you have done in the past that are not included in this budget? No, no changes in programs. Are there rate or fee increases? If so, why? Yes, we basically have fee increases every year for our sewer rates, our trash, and our recycling and yard waste. So those are fairly similar to what we've had in the past. Generally, the trash and then recycling and yard waste is, I'll call it an inflationary increase, somewhere in 2% to 4% per year increase on the sewer side because of the large number of sanitary sewer separation projects we're doing. That is in the 4% to 5%, and will probably continue that way until we're through with CSO in like 2038, and then we'll have to look at what the costs are at that point in time. Are there rate increases from the current budget that have not been implemented yet, and if so, why not? To minimize the rate increases for trash during the pandemic, we did not adjust those to the amount that was, the amounts that were approved by council, and those rates will be adjusted within the coming FY26 budget to align with our, our cost increases. Are there major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? Or, yes, not increases, but purchases? Yes, Fleet every year has a little over $4 million, and that's for the entire city. So that's police, fire, public service, every other department. We buy the vehicles and then essentially charge those out as a rental to the departments that are using that. Now, the exception is, if there's grant funding, police has some drug forfeiture, and they buy their vehicles, but this, this budget that's in with Fleet is pretty much the life cycles that we have established for those vehicles so that we can replace them in a timely fashion. Our ages are getting much better on our vehicles now, that we're kind of fully implementing that, whereas council members that were around for a while know that it had been that really, when the budget was submitted, the mayor looked at what money was available, put that aside for vehicles, and it was not always enough to keep the replacement cycle that we needed. So now we're in a much better position on those. What impact has 311 taken on department and staff? Basically, antifinances of calls due to eliminate staffing. 311 has taken a significant number of calls off of our folks, both at O&M and on Seventh Floor. I don't have the numbers, but I'm sure, you know, I can get those, or Delisa can provide those for you. Because of staffing shortages, we have not made any changes to staffing so far, but the, the volume, I would say, for most of the calls, and it hasn't been fully implemented for, for everything yet, probably, probably 2/3 of our calls have been reduced across the board, so it's freeing up time for other staffs. So once we are actually fully staffed, hopefully in our administrative side of O&M and on Seventh Floor, we'll be able to look at ways that we can change staffing around or reduce that so that it's a, not a net increase in the overall budget due to 311. Are there any eliminating, combining, or contracting of positions in your budget? If so, provide specifics. We're not proposing any elimination, combination of contracting of positions in our FY26 budget. How many employees have left your department in the past year? How many were due to retirement? We've had 15 leave the department. Seven were resignations, six retirements, and two transfers to other departments within the city. Does the department have additional arborist in the budget? If not, why not? So the arborist position that was added last year has been posted for the majority of this year. We have not been able to fill that position yet. It is open until posted, and once we're hopefully able to fill that position, then we will, can look at other, you know, needs in that department. We actually, we're close, had an offer out, and the person was not able to successfully pass everything they needed to, and so we're, we're kind of back to, I don't want to say square one, but trying to, to get that position posted as well, or filled, as posted. What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department, and what were the savings? Significant one is out at the wastewater plant, where they've looked at the utility bills and have found some possibilities and have actually implemented some things that have come up with savings. One is that there's, on the electric bill, what they call a demand charge, which is really essentially the maximum amount of electricity you could use, there's a charge for that, and through some implementation of capacitors out there, we're able to reduce that demand charge, and that should come up with savings of about a little over $100,000 per year annually. We've also, we had a pump that have, had a valve that wasn't working properly at a pump station, that's about $10,000 per year savings with that. We have kind of, if everyone, anyone's been to the wastewater plant, and if not, I invite you out to a tour. It's, it's really fun, don't go in the middle of the summer when the, the air is dead out there, but one of the final processes is through kind of a sand filter, and that gets clogged up, they have to backwash that, so the water is reversed. They found that if they're able to change those backwater operations, they're able to do it with lower energy, and that would be savings of about $15,000 annually. And then a big potential savings, we have some other things we have to implement. We have large blowers out there that put air through tanks, and because of the way they are set and the big, looks like a showerhead, ceramic diffuser, we have to run those blowers 100% on all the time, otherwise it'll clog. So we're looking at ways that we can kind of change that up, and we should be able to see significant energy savings up to about $20,000 per month if we're able to do that. Now, there's a capital cost upfront, and so we have to look at lifecycle costs, but that's something we're investigating right now. At O&M, I don't know this year if you've gotten as many complaints with yard waste as being behind, but we have, we basically rent some rearload packers, so your traditional trash trucks you used to see a long time ago, where people throw stuff in the back, those have a much lower height to throw, whether it's the bundles or the bags in there, and because of that, we're able to be much more productive when we're doing that. Plus, we also have trucks that, they're new to us, and so they don't break down, so we have two of those this year, and so as far as I know, we've only been a half day behind with yard waste this year. Some of that may be weather, other things, but we think that these rearload trucks are helping us out with that, and so we rent those for about a month in the spring, month in the fall, and that helps our operations. The other thing that we're implementing, and you'll see in your budget on the capital side, is we're starting to use more salt brine for winter de-icing. We have kind of small tanks on the sides of the trucks right now, and so we don't really know what the operational savings will be, but we're trying to increase the amount of brine production, and then we'll have larger tanks, and that could account for savings of up to like 35% in salt, which could be, you know, up to $100,000 per year. Now, one caveat to that is, we sell a lot of salt to other entities like DLI's contractor, Parkings Contractor, Lansing School District, and if they are continuing to use as much salt, then we might not see the savings, but those costs are just passed on to those entities. So, you know, overall, the budget, what we're purchasing might not go down, but our costs to the city would go down if we're implementing that, and so we're, we're hoping that we can get some large tanks and do some mixing onsite and then increase the number, the amount of liquids we're able to have on our trucks, which should allow that salt as opposed to scattering all over the place. It sticks where it needs to, and we're also able to get out in front of snowstorms and put that brine solution down. It dries, and that helps kind of break up that bond, and so we don't actually have to be out doing everything right when that snow starts. We also have a position within this year's budget in our administration division, and I'm sure a lot of you are familiar with it, a kind of business and financial manager, and that position is tasked to look at all of our business processes, to look for cost savings, operational efficiencies, and we're hoping that by middle of May, we've made an offer there, and if that position's on, then sitting here next year, I should be able to tell you what we found in ways we're able to either reduce costs, increase operational efficiencies, or provide, you know, better service to our residents. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? With staffing levels in the proposed budget, we are able to provide all necessary responsibilities. The main need, which is not a surprise to you, is on the capital side for both roads, sewers, everything else. We have older infrastructure, and we could definitely use additional funding for that infrastructure. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget at this time? No, they're not. Always open to suggestions if your things, you think that we should be doing, and we're not. Who are the two largest vendors in your department, and when were they last bid? You'll see this probably going on for years and years. Our two largest vendors are any of our CSO contractors, and those are bid with each project. So currently Hoffman Brothers is one, and Levitt Stark is the other. So Hoffman Brothers is doing CSO 019 area, and Levitt Stark is doing the multi-year 15 South, which was kind of downtown west side neighborhood. That, that's a huge project. Have you budgeted for receipt of federal grant funds? If you have, and the federal funds get pulled, will you be able to continue the service of those funds? So we are not budgeting any grant funds within our budget. As far as revenues, what we do, if, once council approves the acceptance of those grant funds, we have a separate grant account set up for that, but we are not assuming those revenues when we look at what our budgeting is right now. That's, that's up and above that, so if those funds get pulled, what we would be sort of out would be anything we had not been reimbursed, because most of our grants are reimbursement, and we can submit monthly reimbursements for that, so we just need to make sure we're on top of that in case federal rules change at all, and we are definitely following that in, in case those funds would be in jeopardy. But right now, we don't think they are, and we are not budgeting those either on the expenditure side or the revenue side within our budget. What impact has the new BSNA had on your department, and what issues have you run into, and have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? As I'm sure you're aware, all new platforms come with challenges. This one is no exception. I'm an old dog, and I like the old stuff because I could, could figure it out, and I still haven't really gotten proficient with BSNA, but on the payroll side, we did initially have some issues with both the routing of those two supervisors, the fact that not all the codes that we used for employees were set up the way they needed to be. I think especially at our, our O&M employees, they have a bunch of different codes, and unless they have all the lines to charge to, they're not able to do that. We've worked through most of those. I will say that I was not, or was Jeremiah, until recently, some of the challenges we are still having with payroll codes as things change, they might not have had, say, bereavement on theirs, and if they had that, we're out of class pay, and so those we're working through with, with HR. It's a lot of work for them because sometimes each individual employee, if there are exceptions, they have to add those lines, and so things are getting better every single payroll. I don't want to say it's completely done yet, but it is much better than it was initially. My last page, so I think that's all the questions.
All right, we're going to open it up first with Councilmember Spatafor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Kilpatrick, thanks for being here, for all the work that you do. Very responsive. You kind of touched, I've got a couple of questions. First, I'll start with the energy efficiencies at wastewater treatment. Please remind me where we are at on the solar installations for that.
Yep, so solar installation, we've completed essentially a second study. We had one done by our performance contracting contractor, and then we had an independent review of that. We are, we have a, I'll call it a bid slash RFP for design build that is going out, and then once we have that, we are looking to implement solar at both the wastewater plant, Harden Street Pump Station, and then also Guyer Community Center.
Thank you. And did any of those numbers you mentioned in terms of savings assume the solar, or was that outside of solar?
No, that is outside solar. So solar looks like, overall, it's different by different facility, but the payback is somewhere in the eight to 12-year range, assuming. somewhere in the eight to twelve-year range, assuming tariffs are on and we can get domestic production or the costs don't increase significantly. And, that will be a challenge with kind of the bidding we're in now. We're, the way we're bidding this is we're bidding the design first, and then, because if we were to ask the contractor for a firm price now for the installation, they would give us a high price to protect themselves. And so, we will have to see if things change at the federal level of availability, and then we'll have to make our final assessment based on what those costs are, because if they go up, you know, fifty or seventy-five percent, then the payback may or may not make sense. So, it's not a final decision that we're moving forward with that, but right now, it looks very favorable.
And that's direct ownership versus PTA?
Correct.
Okay.
We are looking at maybe a possibility of the private group putting this in, potentially doing maintenance on that, but that would be separate from the installation. But, yes, we're not looking at like a power purchase agreement, where we'd be buying the energy, we would own it, and then, we might have some financing options too, if those are favorable. But, generally, as you know, on the, the public side, we're able to get better rates on the private side as well.
Thank you. Second question related to trash in the right-of-way. You mentioned a new technician. This has been asked, I know Councilmember Costis had the question too. Why is it that trash in the right-of-way curb is public service and not code?
That would be a great question for a city attorney. That's the way the ordinance is stated, but we've been working together with code to see if, you know, one or the other of us can do that together, so that we're not sending code out to do what's behind kind of the sidewalk and the private property, us doing the other, and having either our staff or one contractor on our side and one on the, you know, private side do that.
The short answer is that that's the way the ordinance is written. There's a longer answer that I don't want to bore everyone with presently. I will say that a change to that ordinance was submitted at council on Monday last week to modify it, so that that section of 1060 clearly states that public service director and/or designate and code compliance officer and/or designate.
So, the answer is because that's how we do it, not because there's a reason that we shouldn't do it a different way?
That's part of the more complicated answer. I will say that the, in very large part, the kinds of trash that we are talking about that are in the right-of-way, that is, that is the issue right now. It is otherwise safe for code compliance to abate that equally. Again, I don't want to get into the ways that that could go wrong.
You can bore me later off.
But, it could go wrong.
Okay.
But, what we are really looking at right now, code compliance could also be abating that.
Okay, thank you. And then, one more if I may. You mentioned moving towards the brine, the saline brine solution. Can, you touched on a little bit of the benefits. What's the benefit of that?
Yes. So, the main benefit from us, or I guess the disadvantage of rock salt that we would put down, is when you apply that, it pretty much scatters, and traffic going, it moves to the side of the road. With liquids, and you have kind of pre-wet the salt, where you drop it, it stays. If you go full liquids, you're able to apply that much more precisely and with lower use, because you're applying it exactly where you, you need to. So, we don't have the same experience that others do. M.D.A. did a pilot out on West Saginaw, which was a hundred percent brine, and that's not something we're looking at, because brine doesn't work well all the time. But, if we're able to have more brine, it should allow us to reduce, reduce the amount of salt that we're, essentially, you're reducing the amount of waste that you have.
So, the capital expenditure is retrofitting our trucks?
So, it would be with new trucks we buy, but the, the capital expenditure right now would be we have to have large mixing tanks. So, we mix those. Right now, I think it's probably a couple hundred gallons that we mix at a time, and we need to increase that to, you know, five hundred or thousand gallons, because we're going to be using a lot more liquid, less rock salt. So, you know, large tanks on the trucks or a trailer, kind of almost like you see farmers spreading fertilizer, liquid fertilizer, and you have the nozzles down there, it'd be something similar to that.
Different smell though, right?
I, I hope so.
Okay.
Yes. We're not planning to use what we kind of get rid of at the wastewater plant on our roads anytime soon.
Cool. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Looks like you're popular tonight, Andy. So, next I have Councilmember Brown.
Thank you. Thank you for being here and always being responsive as well. We appreciate that. You spoke a little bit to, my question is relating to the business manager and looking at operational efficiencies. I know that, you know, for the last few years, we've discussed that overall with the city. We've implemented a chief strategy officer, financial health teams, all of these different, I guess, comprehensive components. How is the, bless you. How is the business manager, or kind of what's the skillset? How are they working with, I guess, the chief strategy officer? Kind of sounded like it was the same role. So, if you could just kind of elaborate on that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
There definitely is some overlap, but that person is specifically looking at our department. They will also help kind of be our liaison to finance for audits, grant compliance, those type of things. So, we believe, well, we know that our staff now does not have the extra time to, when we bring on a grant, to go through that, and we have not had anyone that has comprehensively looked at, say, say our wastewater, our sanitary sewer fund, to look at exactly what those rates should be. Are there ways that we can reduce those rates? You know, energy efficiency, the business units that we run. And, not to say that Jake can't do a lot, but he can't do it for everything in the city, and I think we've been able to change. We used to have a business, business permits and technology manager, and that was kind of reorganized to another position. That's sort of bringing that back, but not, so permits is not part of that. Permits is part of engineering now, and so, it's really more on the, just the business side, business and financial side. And, we did it kind of both with business first, because we did not want someone that is just, no offense to auditors and financial folks, but we didn't want a, just a kind of bean counter person, and we wanted someone that, that looks at the services we deliver and has a business perspective on how we're delivering those and can hopefully improve that, both for efficiency and on the cost side.
Okay. Thank you so much. Is that, Jake, a part of our overall strategy as the chief strategy officer? Do you have a strategic plan, and then each department is implementing positions such as this business manager in which you indicated?
Yeah, so it's departments by departments. They have their own staff that they manage, and so, where I'm looking at the city as a whole, looking at our long-term costs, this would be a subject matter expert specifically for public service. And, public service is about thirty, thirty-six percent of our citywide budget compared to our next largest expense of retirement and other fixed benefit costs of about nineteen percent. And so, this is a position that can really look at those infrastructure projects as a whole, and also manage more of the day-to-day activities of the public service department that while I will coordinate with this individual and be working with them, my sole purpose does not, is not entirely dedicated to public service and all of their specific needs.
Absolutely. I was wondering, is this a part of, in your role, looking at the overall strategy of the city? Is this position something where you have a strategic plan, you're saying we need this in this department, and we're going to be doing something in HR? We're also going to have this type of role in HRCS? So, talking about in your role overall, as he indicated, this is an internal position with a subject matter expert, talking about how is this in conjunction with your strategic plan for the overall city?
Yep. I will let Kilpatrick, Director Kilpatrick speak to the entirety of the position, but I did have a small part in recommending a position of a very similar sort as part of their budget, particularly as it relates to the complex financial nature of public service relative to all the departments, which have a far more, a simpler organization.
Thank you. Okay, I've got Vice President Carter.
Thank you, President Cost. Both of my questions were already asked previously by Councilmembers Spatafor and Brown, but with the technician position, you mentioned that they will be responsible for trash and sidewalk complaints. So, what would the difference be between this particular position and 311, and how that gets funneled, and how our residents will be able to communicate that?
So, as far as how residents would enter complaints, they're the same way. So, when someone enters something in, well, whether 311 or Lansing Connect, it goes into City Works, our asset management work order program as a service request, and it gets dispatched, depending on the type, to those technicians. So, I won't say that this technician is the only one that's going to do those, because we divide the city up by areas, but it will add those, those hours, that capability, so that we will be able to investigate those sidewalk complaints in a more timely manner. And, key to that is actually then this person or these, these people, if we spread it out, will be able to follow up, you know, with a contractor, with our city staff to make sure those are done, because right now, there's, I guess, a little bit of lack of coordination that once our work is done in the permits office, that gets dispatched, and it kind of sits in a queue until it's done. And so, we're not washing our hands of it, but there's not someone that's following up to make sure that's done. So, once we have an as-needed concrete contractor onboard, and with the O and M staff, they will kind of manage that, that workflow, and they will also run sidewalk projects. So, as was discussed, you know, this trash in the right-of-way, that's something with code compliance, we will coordinate, or whether it's signs in the right-of-way or something else, there will just be more time for that. There used to be, and this is going to unfortunately predate probably almost anyone that's here, but public service had two right-of-way inspectors, that that's what they were dedicated to doing. And, this will be, this will kind of restore that to, to some extent. We will free up enough time to have one person's time, whether it's one or the four people that can dedicate themselves to what some might say, at least from our perspective, might be a lower priority, but for quality of life, it's a much higher priority than we're able to give it right now.
No, thank you for that. And then, you mentioned there were fifteen employees that left, but seven of those were resignations, were those? And, I didn't catch the ones that went to other departments, but were any of those comp-
There were two other, to what, to other departments.
Two other departments. Was any of the other resignations due to any compensation issues or anything like that that you can discuss?
Um, you know, I think we can tell anecdotally. HR will sometimes do exit interviews, but a lot of times, it is related to, to, you know, basically overall compensation. And, a lot of it's not, if you look at overall compensation, it may not be significantly different, but they're actually looking at salary versus the benefits. And, you know, depending where they are in life, the salary might be much more important. And, you know, quality of life, it may differ too. They may be on the road a lot, they may be working a lot more hours, but they may be just looking at that bottom line. So, that is something that's, that's more difficult for us to compete with now compared to the private sector.
And those positions have already been posted?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. I've got Councilmember Garza.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, Mr. Kilpatrick, Mr. Kilgore. Thanks for being here. I as well appreciate your responsiveness on the emails, and thanks for letting me use the key to the South Street entrance. I still have it. It's actually in my drawer. I meant to bring it back today, but very much appreciated. They had a lot of trash they picked up. Got a couple of questions. You mentioned staffing shortages. How many positions short throughout the public service department are there? I understand that you said the forestry position's been posted all year. Is that due to the cost that we're offering or the salary? Is it comparable to other municipalities?
I think compared to other municipalities, we're competitive. Compared to, you know, private tree service, not as much. And, I think that's what we're finding if we're looking at our positions, which are most of our positions at O and M, that require a commercial driver's license. People are able to make more than we're paying, especially on the seasonal side. I mean, we, we try, I think our seasonals are twenty-one, twenty-two, something dollars an hour, and it is very difficult to get folks that have a commercial driver's license, even though we will pay for them. We have a, an online, you know, module that they can go through, and we will pay for them to get their, their commercial driver's license, but it's hard to attract those candidates. I don't have great solutions for that. Yeah, sure, if you pay more, but can we always compete with the, the private side? Then, it's going to drive our costs up. So, that, that is a challenge on a lot of those positions.
So, regarding, regarding the different positions, how many are we short rate?
Generally, we've been in the twenty-ish percent range, so that's-
Sixty or so employees.
Yeah.
Sixty or so employees?
Yeah.
Now, are all those positions posted online right now?
The vast majority are, and we can give you a list of what is, I mean, we, because we keep our own list of like, you know, which positions are vacant versus which ones are posted. A lot of them, like, so our mechanic, all those vacancies, that's just an open posting. It's been there forever, and we sometimes will get one or two per year, but unfortunately, people don't stay with the city forever. So, as we have an aging workforce, we have people that continue to leave for a variety of reasons, and we have to fill those, plus the current vacancies we have. So, we're pretty much kind of status quo. We've been able to fill a lot of positions, but we do have people leaving also.
Okay, all right, thank you. And one, one last question. Regarding pulling money off major streets and putting them onto residential streets, now, is there a big plan to still use that chip and fog seal? I know there's quite a bit of complaints with the, the debris being in the curb and the pans.
It is one approach that we will use for the correct candidate streets. So, if a road is too far gone, that's not going to work. If it is in good shape, that's not necessary, but some in those, those middle range, that definitely preserves the life of them. And, I understand that people might not, you know, like how they look, and they're, they're a little bit rougher, but it is a very cost-effective treatment. And so, really, the, the main issue there is to make sure that, we, we had some issues early on that they didn't get back and put that fog seal on, which really kind of binds kind of the rock that's put down there, and we've changed our specifications, so that can only sit a maximum amount of time. There's still going to be debris that goes to the gutter pan. We'll need to make sure we sweep that up, which is why, until fairly recently, in curb and gutter streets, that was not used. It was mostly in rural areas that had like a gravel shoulder already, but it is a very cost-effective treatment, and if applied right, I think it is good for certain candidate streets. I don't think we have a whole lot more that are in that range right now. So, we either have streets that have not fallen to that level yet, that would be more like a, you know, a crack seal, or a mastic where the cracks are larger, or it really needs a reconstruct on that road. But, that is, that is one tool, kind of in our toolbox that we will continue to use where, where it's appropriate.
Okay. Just one, one follow-up with that. Regarding that, that chip and fog seal, who do we use as a contractor? Do we have like an exclusive contractor, or do we have multiple ones?
We bid it out by, like, project, and then, we will renew that up to, you know, four times if it's working well. I believe we're kind of to the point where we need to bid that out again if we're going to do that, and I don't think we have any projects currently that are planned for chip and fog this year.
All right, thank you.
We're not just using whoever built Big Penny to do our roads. I've got, I've got Councilman Hussein followed by Councilman Jackson.
Yeah, the first thing is, so, there's been some, some conversation about the elimination of the night shift in terms of O and M, and I'm curious, number one, if, if that's true. I think some of the concern that's been conveyed to this body is that some of the work that that group does, you think of, you know, filling of pile hole, street sweeping, things like that, that if you're doing that during the day and you have higher traffic volumes, that we might not get obviously the work done at the same rate, but also, it puts our employees in, in some measure of danger. So, is there any truth to that? And, and if so, what, what's behind the decision?
Yes, there is truth to eliminating or moving those folks from third shift to first shift and second shift. The reason for that is a lot of the work that we used to do, including the street sweeping, used to be almost exclusively at night. We've moved that to days. We will still have, you know, those employees will be working, they will be with work groups. What we looked at is the calls and type of work they were doing at night, and the fact that a lot of people don't even like working night shift, and so, a lot of the low seniority folks, that's where they start out, and the first chance they get to move, move to days, they move to days. I think the main concern with us would be to make sure we have coverage, so if we have issues at night. We still have people on call, there's an on-call supervisor, we still have our twenty-four-seven, you know, call number that people can call in, and we will bring people in. But, when we actually looked at the work they were doing versus what, you know, had to be done at night versus days, we felt it was better use of the staff to move them to days. There are also more opportunities for cross-training during the days, because we have different work groups, and so, they can move back and forth and learn other skills. We've also found that, you know, we can move people around major streets versus local streets, so, you know, if they're out, say, seven to nine in the morning, they're not on MLK, they're in the neighborhoods. And so, we're able to, you know, work around that, so we don't believe that there's a change in safety. And, a lot of the blitzes kind of we're doing with potholing and everything else, it's not at night. We're doing that kind of extending shifts, we're doing that on a weekend, you know, a lot of kind of Saturday where we bring, bring a lot of folks in and try and get that taken care of when traffic volumes are lower. I don't know, Jeremiah, if you have other insights on that?
No, I appreciate that. Are you, have we continued to explore internally what it would cost essentially to stand up in in-house exclusive solid waste removal kind of outfit in terms of staffing, in terms of equipment, that type of thing? And if so, also what would the economic impact, you know, of something like that be? So, are we continuing to explore that?
Yes, we looked at that. We actually had a consultant do a study and what they found that the current way we're doing it with part of the city and part of it, other contractors, I think we actually only have two now that are approved waste haulers with Grainger and Waste Management. That is the least efficient way to do that. So, whether we are all in or all out is much, much better for both the roads, the customers and the cost. The challenge, if we were to bring it completely in-house, is our yard is sort of maxed out where we have the trucks now. The lead time for trucks is a year to two. It's hard for us to find solid waste staff as it is. So, I think if we make some sort of change, we would take X number of years, evaluate a model and see if it made sense on the city side. If we are cost competitive, then we could get more into that or maybe eventually get to a point where we took it all over. Otherwise, if it doesn't look like we can do that cost-effectively, we can take those existing resources and look at recycling more and probably get into markets that the private folks can't find money in because they need to make a profit. And we can look at those markets because now that we do have a front-load truck that we can use for recycling, we got with a grant, we can do things that we weren't able to do because right now we can just do kind of side-tip carts just like our residential side. And so, we were able to actually get into larger users on that recycling side and we could look at that if it makes sense for the trash site too.
Okay, I appreciate that. And then lastly, there's been some rumor too about, you know, we may be looking at contracting out surface and street maintenance as an example. Is there any truth to that?
Not completely. I mean, so we have, we contract certain, like when we repave, there are some that O and M will do streets. We have a contract for streets. We have done catch basins where our staff will do catch basin cleaning. We have a contractor to catch basin cleaning. So, there is not anything that we're looking at completely getting out of. I guess the exception would be, so crack filling, we basically either do that or we do the mastic. We've decided we're going to do the mastic. We kind of contract out the crack filling, that's just based on the equipment. But nothing that we're currently doing, we're saying we're getting out of the business and we're going to contract that out. All right, I've got Councilman Jackson.
Thank you. I think we've, I'm the last person to get to go and I also want to thank you for all of your responsiveness. I feel like every time I send you something, it goes to the right place and somebody gets the right answer or an answer. I appreciate that. So, the Public Service Department is very large, has a lot of responsibilities, you would agree with that. And I think if I can go, if I can be brief, you can be brief and Jake can be brief, we can get through this in maybe like five minutes. But I wanted to direct your attention to one of the major divisions. That's the Sustainability Division. I'm looking at your budget document here and if I could read the three and a half paragraphs just so we're all on the same page. Sustainability, the Sustainability Division works to create and maintain sustainable practices in all city services, plans, designs and operations. This division is responsible for the city's Sustainability Action Plan, Climate Action Plan, and supports the Mayor's Advisory Commission on Sustainability. The division is also responsible for implementing major grant funding sustainability investments across the city. The city's Sustainability Action Plan focuses on six areas to guide Lansing towards a more sustainable future. Specific topics addressed as part of the plan include energy efficiency, renewable energy, transportation and mobility, conservation and protection of waste of water resources, land use and materials management. The city's Climate Action Plan prioritizes sustainability in the city's own operations. Goals of the plan include reducing the city's carbon impact, increasing energy efficiency, reducing waste and identifying other long-term operational environmental savings. Are you aware of these savings that has happened so far?
So, the main saving we have is kind of, we started around the same time that sustainability, kind of that position Sustainability Manager was created, was when we looked at all of our facilities for energy efficiency. And we have received our first report on that. We actually have a meeting this week, the end of this week, on our second report and that'd be something that I'm happy to share on that. So, that would be some savings that the departments will see as energy savings. There are also obviously operational savings with things not breaking down as much. Sustainability is involved. We have an update to our non-motorized plan, so we're going to start that soon. And so, they're involved with that. They're involved with looking at, you know, waste reduction and looking at city facilities. Who has recycling, who doesn't, who's trash drivers. So, they are involved, not exclusively in them running projects, but in a lot of the city operations that our department does in helping us to make sure that we're doing those with a Sustainability Action Plan.
And Andy, I know you're very thorough, but, and so you're aware of some of the savings. You probably spoke to Sustainability Manager Lori Welsh about some of them. And there is a quantified number that is in the thousands and tens of thousands, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Do you have that number now or is some, yeah, you can provide?
I can provide, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can definitely provide what we have, both for realized savings, and a lot of that would be with our building so far, and then projected savings on the solar side if we move forward to that. And that's something that, you know, more is in the Mayor's Office, kind of wheelhouse with the new Public Safety Complex. But one thing they're looking at there is doing a geothermal, you know, heating and cooling system. And that's something that is kind of more expensive upfront, but will have significant savings long-term for energy. So, those are the kind of things that, you know, I guess maybe sometimes the sustainability, the focus doesn't get as much credit because maybe it's us on the kind of more standard side, but we're seeing those savings. We're seeing the savings when we buy electric vehicles.
Sure. So, and again, I know you're thorough and you're answering the question. You heard earlier that, you know, we're talking about solar implementation. Who in your department is working on that? Is that the Sustainability Department also?
So, they are part of it as far as implementing the actual project, they are not implementing the project. So, the one, since it will be primarily wastewater, wastewater will be running that project, just like the geothermal at Public Safety. So, our contractors there are running that project, but Sustainability, their staff are on these calls. They know what's going on and, you know, they can provide an overall update too. But we can provide some kind of key metrics of what they've been working on and savings realized so far and projected savings to come from the things they've been involved with.
Sure, and I guess, and again, I know you're going to, a quick answer, maybe Jake knows. Are we in tens of thousands or are we in hundreds of thousands or something else?
I would say somewhere in between on an annual basis, on the energy savings. And some things, just to point out, might not be quantifiable. Look, I mean, the forestry grant we have, if we are planting trees on private property and that shades the houses, the city doesn't see the savings, the community sees the savings. So, not the city, the government, but overall our residents would see those savings. So, there are some of those that we can quantify, but we are not seeing the direct benefit to those.
So, one of the answers was there are no new initiatives going on and that if we had some, you know, like, you know, you probably, I'm sure now, could think of a bunch of initiatives. But are you aware that the Sustainability Department does have that food scrap program?
Yep, that's a pilot program in that the funding is actually coming from kind of our recycling yard waste and we actually have surveys that were sent on that. We should have a report soon on how many people are using that and what the diversion has been. And that's something that it seems like it's proving successful and we're looking at potentially other facilities to add to that. And then maybe doing a pilot project that we might make it easier so people don't have to drive places. But there's, you know, pluses and minuses if you're doing curbside because then you have trucks driving around and is that really the best way to do that?
And we had Ms. Lori Welsh into our committee and she did explain some of the good things that's going on. So, there, I guess there is. So, do you know that there is a need to not put food in the landfill because of the environmental problems with the emissions that it causes? You know that, right?
Yep.
Okay. So, you would agree that an expanded program would divert that and also provide the good, you know, compost soil or whatever?
Correct. So, with this, we are partnering with Hammond Farms and they've said so far that they've had no issue with kind of the clean food waste that we've been taking. The issue we have overall or could is right now, the participation is voluntary. So, the people that really want to do this, they're the ones that are dropping it off. We have sometimes with, you know, recycling that people, they'll contaminate that. They'll put stuff, whatever they want in their yard waste. So, if we roll it out larger, we just need to make sure that the contamination rates...
And I guess for a spoiler alert, Lori did say that if she had more manpower, staff, that she could help roll that out more successfully and more widespread. Also, did you know that the Sustainability Department through the Climate Action Plan needs to audit what we put in the landfill? And that's like one of the things that is based to some of the blocks that needs to happen?
Correct, yeah. We did a waste audit several years ago and we're due for an update at one on that.
Sure. And also that an increased staff person would be able to help get that done as well?
We could use a lot more staff people.
Yeah, I know you could, but I'm just saying particularly there. And I'll kind of skip past all that. So, Jake, this might be for you. If there's a GL number, does that mean that's just like one of the payments or one of the budget things? So, looking on page, I guess ours is 45 of 82. The last highlighted part for Public Service has some sustainability GL numbers?
Yes.
So, is that everything for the Sustainability Department?
No. So, that is a specifically dedicated source of general fund dollars for sustainability. So, I can't remember the exact allocation, but I know the Sustainability Director is charged to several areas that her activities are involved in. We also have, this position is brought in, some significant investment into the city from federal grants, being able to utilize other people's dollars for major sustainability investments. But those dollars are specifically what we provide out of our general tax dollars for sustainability. And particularly, it's a cost center that we added in the past few years to really just recognize and make sure that we continue to budget for this year after year.
Thank you, Jake. And I know you can go too, because I got a follow-up for you. So, you would agree that basically all that we are spending for sustainability appears to be, the adopted is 40,000 of contractual services and 35,000 of miscellaneous services, so $75,000.
Yep, so we get a really good return on investment.
Okay. So, you would also acknowledge that this position has accomplished many huge, or you said some great grants that come with a lot of money into the city, correct?
That is correct. I can't guarantee that the atmosphere that we've had in the past four to five years and as far as sustainability grants will continue at the same pace, but we still have those major projects that we're going to be spending down over the next few years and, yeah.
And I guess my, probably my last question is, Andy, did you learn from Lori that if she had more people that could help with the grants, that she could continue and expand the grants?
There's definitely no doubt that with more people, you can get more grants. I think the thing we have to look at also is just because you have more grants, doesn't mean you have more people that can carry out the grants. So, we need to make sure that we have the people that can execute the grants. So, that is potentially different staff than the people that find the grants and so that's the balance that we'd have to make sure that we have.
And I guess on a positive note, in the budget, we are certified as a city of the gold-certified Michigan Green Community and maintains a Soul Smart Silver Designation. And our mayor went to the climate conference last year and I'm sure everybody up here has a very strong interest in not only saving money, but also having a great environment. So, thank you for helping us.
Okay. Do we have any further questions, internal auditor?
Thank you, President Cost. Thank you very much for being here, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Just wanted to let you know, I do see the capital improvement plan and the wastewater treatment plan has, what? Close to $8 million with SCADA system, so just to let you know, I'll be watching in on that and be aware of it and want to know more about that, okay? Thank you.
Okay, do we have anything further?
I guess one question I have is when, if we get someone that's, I believe it was for the trash at the curb, are they going to do the bins then, the enforcement of trash bins? I know we changed the ordinance.
Yes, so we will do bins, whether they're city or private, as well as trash that's scattered. Anything in the right-of-way trash-related, our department will investigate. And that would be kind of the same if we're able to use code compliance too. We'll have to coordinate that, but there will have to be some internal routing to figure out how that goes because right now, if people enter that through Lansing Connect, the primary routing of those right now actually goes to code compliance and they refer it back to us. And so, we need to figure out a better way to do that because it doesn't make sense for them either to investigate it and then find it some public right-of-way and then send it to us or vice versa.
Do we have staff right now that are doing bins enforcement?
On a complaint basis, yes.
Okay. So, my neighbors haven't complained about me.
Well, if you'd like, I can, we can go out there.
Sure. Well, I don't have a key to get rid of trash and you know I pick up trash all the time, which brings me to my next question. When people see tires or other materials, like if you go into Potter Walsh there on that curve, it's become a tire dump, should they go to the Lansing Connect app? Is that something we handle?
If it's in the right-of-way, we will address it. Now, I don't want to say, you know, to all those viewers that, you know, now toss in the right-of-way or toss in the park and we'll take care of it, that's not the intent. But if we get that request and it's in our right-of-way, we will address it. If it's in MDOTs, we will work with them and then as their contractor, we will take care of it. The difficult thing we have is sometimes with private property owners or railroads are sometimes difficult to work with, try and get them, it's hit or miss. Sometimes they're great to work with, sometimes not so great. And obviously because of the safety issues, we don't like to go on railroad property unless we have someone out there from the railroad assisting us or being there.
And I don't either. Have we thought about, and we discussed this earlier. We have roads that aren't long neighborhood roads, but are short neighborhood roads that seem to, Fabulous Acres comes to mind immediately. Adams Neighborhood, you know, where we've got these micro roads almost. Some kind of a paving program for them. I mean, I'm sure you've been to Fabulous Acres, you've seen the condition of Garden Street and other streets within the city. So, is there any thought to, you know, when you say it's an X amount of dollars per mile, maybe just looking at that like as a lump neighborhood in addressing all of it? Or is it on the schedule?
So, what we have right now scheduled for this year is what's on the construction map.
Okay.
We have, you know, people call all the time and I don't want to say they're on a list. We drive our streets every other year, so we know the condition. And a lot of times we will wait until the spring because there are certain roads we think are going to fall apart that don't. And so, we end up not doing those. Other roads that we think will be okay and completely fall apart and we need to do something. The problem and what might be counterintuitive is the roads that are in good shape, we want to keep in good shape. And some of the roads that are horrible, we just keep them safe because they failed and really all we can do is reconstruct that. Same thing, if you have fleet of cars, you're not going to only fix the one that needs a transmission or an engine. You're going to take care of the oil, changing, you know, brakes and everything else. So, it's not necessarily the best answer, but we are trying to, with our asset management approach, take the most cost-effective way to dealing with our roads for the money that we have.
Okay. And then the last question I have is, it goes on the sustainability and the environment. Have we started to, as we're buying new things for our fleet, look at options like the Colorado pickup truck versus the big Silverado for better gas mileage, things like that, to start transitioning towards a better cleaner vehicle?
Yes, I mean, we were looking at that all the time. The challenge in a lot of city vehicles is that we're not putting a whole lot of miles on them. So, the average may be, you know, 5,000 or 6,000 miles a year. So, if we were looking at, say, pure EVs, the cost, the incremental cost for those, we don't get the payback that someone might be, you know, putting 15,000 or 20,000 miles a year, but we are always looking at it when we make changes or purchase vehicles. I think what we're finding, and this is reflective of society as a whole, is people want larger vehicles. So, if we were to say, hey, you're going to save money by putting, you know, buying a sedan, they're like, well, I don't want that, I want a big truck. And we've seen that departments, we see that with, you know, the police department. Now, they have some F-150s, they, you know, went from large sedans. Now, I don't think they really have any sedans anymore, they're all in SUVs and largers. And so, that is a challenge for us. We did for a while, and I think this is because of difficulty in getting them, but we got some hybrid explorers and we were seeing some savings there, but it was taking an extra six months to a year to get them. And so, that's a challenge when we need a vehicle to pay a little bit more and have it take longer. Then, yes, you'll have a payback on the backside, but we need to look vehicle by vehicle. And one of the other things we are also looking at is the possibility for, Greg, you can cover your ears, but people to kind of use their personal vehicles and be paid a stipend or mileage so we're not maintaining those vehicles in special... or mileage, so we're not maintaining those vehicles, especially if we get vehicles that are driving, you know, a thousand or two thousand miles a year. Our cost to keep and maintain those is much higher than it would be to pay someone to use their own vehicle.
Okay. Do we have any further questions? Councilman Jackson?
Just really quickly, I want to confirm, you don't, you didn't propose a position for the sustainability department, or did you?
No, there's not one in our budget that's proposed before you.
Thank you.
All right, I think that is it. We're going to thank both of you for being here and have a good evening. Next, we will move on to the HRCS department. We have Director Coleman and her team here. And if you're looking for an arborist, there's a lumberjack fest in Old Town, I hear. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you.
Thank you. If you could introduce your team to us, and then whenever you're ready to start.
Awesome. Sharing this moment with me is Amy Crank, who's our contract manager administrator, Delveta Moses, our deputy director, but also in the audience is Daniel Spencer, who's a contract manager, Joe McDonald, who's our odd man, and Kimberly Gillespie, who's our critical services coordinator. Now, continue, if there are no objections, I'll move on with the questions provided us?
Excellent.
All right. First question for us, is there a difference with your budget from current fiscal year to the proposed budget? The proposed budget will reflect an increase in IT, 311, and personnel expenditures such as wages, retirement, and fringes. Are there any changes in services that your department is responsible for, and if so, why? The answer is no. Are there any programs you have done in the past that you have not included in this budget? The answer here would be no. Are there any rate or fee increases, and if so, why? The answer here is no. Are there any major equipment purchases proposed in your budget? The answer would be no. What impact has 311 taken on your department and staff? If 311 answers your calls, do you intend to eliminate staffing because of lower workload in the proposed budget? The 311 service has allowed us, through our critical services staff, to expend more time coordinating and facilitating direct services rather than fielding and transferring calls. As a result, we have increased the number of individuals served and enhanced our impact on the community. Has the department changed titles and roles of employees due to federal status on diversity? And if so, what are those changes? Yes. The DEI officer is now the culture and accountability officer. The EEO and prevailing wage specialist is now the culture and, a culture, accountability, and prevailing wage specialist. Are there any eliminated combining or contracting positions in your budget? And if so, provide specifics. Yes. The office support staff contract will be eliminated and replaced with a full-time administrative assistant. This position will focus on office management, case management, records management, and office client services, and support for new initiatives. How many employees have left your department in the past year, and how many were due to retirement? HRCS lost one staff member due to retirement in November of 24. What, if any, operational changes have you made to become more efficient in your department? What were the savings? In January of 2024, we successfully integrated with 311 Call Center to enhance public access to general information and improve accuracy of data collection from initial calls. Our HRCS staff now utilizes the 311 database for ongoing case management, ensuring a more efficient response to community needs. We continue to utilize Wise Hive, our grant management program, and have expanded its functionality to include a racial equity application and grant management process. While these initiatives may not yield significant monetary savings, they do streamline our processes, enhance time management, and create a more efficient application and grant management experience for contract managers and the HRCS advisory board. This ultimately allows us to broaden our services and strengthen community support. Are you able to perform all necessary departmental responsibilities with this budget? The answer is yes. Are there any new initiatives or services your department will be providing with this budget? Yes, we hope to reinstate rent smart for tenants, develop a rent smart program for landlords, launch the implementation of the citizens complaint process campaign, and veteran support services to our critical services efforts, and facilitate nonprofit technical assistance to include budget development, grant writing, and cultural accountability training for local agencies. We recently completed the homelessness study titled Lansing's Path Forward. We will collaborate with Ingham County COC on next steps in implementation. And then lastly, we are exploring collaborating with local agencies and the continuum of care on a ped mission program. This web-based platform is designed for homeless services organizations and property owners to facilitate property management efforts and assist individuals and families in their housing search by streamlining the process. These initiatives, again, may not deliver immediate financial savings for the city, but they represent vital investments in our agency's efficiency and effectiveness. We see these programs streamlining our processes, enhancing collaboration with local agencies, allocating resources more strategically, and improving our service delivery to the community, all leading to better outcomes for families and the community. Have you budgeted for receipt of federal grant funds? And if you have, the federal, if you have and the federal funds get pulled back, will you still be able to continue the service those funds would be used for or purchased, the items you intended to purchase with the federal grant funds? Or cover the staff that the grant was supplementing? And the answer there is no. HRCS has not budgeted for federal grant funds. What impact has the new BSNA had on your department, and what issues have you run into? Have your employees had issues with BSNA payroll? Our answer is none and no issues. Does the department have the FTE Housing Legal Assistant in the budget, and if not, why? No, we acknowledge the constraints of our budget and want to be mindful of tax increases. And then last question, does the department have the DEI Implementation Specialist in the budget? And if not, why? No, the answer is no. The DEI Implementation Specialist is not included in the proposed budget as a new position. This role was previously approved in the 2425 budget under the title EEO and prevailing wage specialist. It has since been renamed the Culture, Accountability, and Prevailing Wage Specialist. And that concludes my questions.
Okay. I have Councilman Garza.
Thank you, Council President, and thanks for being here, Mr. Coleman and team. So just a real quick question regarding the salaries. I noticed that it's going up by approximately two hundred thousand for fiscal year 2025, and then another two hundred thousand approximately in 2026. Can you explain that?
I will defer to Jake on that question.
Yep, so overall in the personnel, I'm not sure if you're looking at the specific line items, but generally the differences there, the positions remain largely the same number of FTE, or they remain exactly the same number of FTE, but there were several position reclassifications that occurred over the course of the previous year, some positions that were added. Last year, we estimated at a lower rate than when they finally went through the classification process, finally came out the other end. The other difference in personnel comes from just increases of fringe benefit costs that are impact citywide, and so it's mostly between those two factors, the specific wages and collective bargaining arrangements, the CECL position review process, and fringe benefit costs.
All right, thanks for answering that. Jake, approximately how many employees are there that the wages increased so much? I mean, I'm seeing almost double. I mean, two hundred thousand dollars shy of being double of what 2024 actual was.
We can get you a breakdown of those positions and maybe an org chart, too.
All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, do we have any other questions? Internal auditor?
Thank you, President Cost, really, Chair. Councilmember Garza asked it, but I'm putting it more as a percentage, it's more like twenty-five, twenty-six percent. I mean, that's quite a bit to be off as far as your classifications. So I was, I'm wanting a little bit more information on that than just, hey, we did it, and that's what it is.
So I think there's
Something happened.
There's several pieces that kind of came together here. So there is new positions where we didn't know exactly what level they would come in at, and then there were some existing positions that got reclassified and that just had an impact across a significant portion of their budget. Now, there is a portion of HRCS time that is not necessarily recognized as part of our adopted budget, but occasionally branches out into grant activities as is available, and so sometimes there's the opportunity to reduce that over the course of the year, but we didn't factor that in as part of the current year projection. I think also just for generally across the budget, I know you had a note in your internal auditor report that I ran, the percentages that you see in your budget pages are adopted to proposed rather than amended to proposed, so significant difference in the adopted and amended, mostly from the carryforward of basic human services funding from the previous year. That's answering sort of two questions at once, so you can call me back if you need to.
Do we have any other questions? Just quickly curious, I see we got the grants here, and I'm not going to throw which one it is on here out, but we've had discussions about the, some of this money going to people that were accused and charged by MSP, and the charges were dropped of over-prescribing benzodiazepines. We in fact increased their funding. Did we ever take a look at this list and who we're giving money to? I mean, did it, maybe I'm wrong, maybe it all checked out?
We did indeed. You want to speak to it? Hold on.
So yes, we have completed monitoring on each of our agencies that we funded this year, that agency being one of them, and we are going to be continuing to monitor those agencies as well, just to look at items like you just spoke of.
Okay, and then the other question I have, I've had several folks reach out to me about housing issues, and I always send them to Joe. There's a website, on your website, there's a phone number for Joe McDonald, and some of the individuals in fact called me back and said that they got 311, and that 311 said they weren't eligible for anything that the city has to offer. Does that sound like something 311 would be doing, or should that be getting routed to Joe?
Three one, 311 should be routing those calls to Joe.
Okay, so it was, sounds like it maybe was a mistake then?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Well, that satisfies my questions. Are there any other questions? Okay, fantastic. I want to thank all of you for being here tonight. It's my understanding you do not have the comprehensive study on the homeless done yet?
I do not. In fact, what we did, we got it later this evening, and so I do now have my hands on it, but I'm not in possession to do a presentation on it just yet. When we schedule that, a representative from Public Policy Associates will be joining us, since they did indeed do the work.
Okay, we will, we will work with you to reschedule that. Thank you all for coming tonight.
And thank you for having us.
Yep, thank you. All right. Next, we are on to item six, other D, which is a discussion on fiscal year 2526 budget policies. We had this on here last time, but there are some things that I think have been satisfied that we can clean out of here. If I can point your attention to page sixty-six in the packet, item labeled D, there was the opioid settlement balances and carryforward question. I think that that has been done satisfactorily. I think we can remove that out of there, if everybody's in agreeance on that. I don't see any objections. And then we had on sixty-nine, the biannual reporting for the 311 call center number of calls, so on and so forth. That was submitted by the administration to Charles, so I think we can clear that off of the list, as well as the contracts. I believe that that was sent to us as well. And then the city road maintenance, construction, capital improvement plan, I do believe we received that as well. We can strike that if everyone's okay with that. The residential solid waste, it looks like we did get the cost benefit on that, and I am currently working on that issue with Andy Kilpatrick, and I believe that this budget also includes an increase for more bins to cover the city for everyone having a city bin or the granger that you take to the road. And then we did get the report for mowing and cemeteries, it's attached in your packet, so I think that we can strike that at this point, that question. The capital city allocations, I believe that that is also sent to the internal auditor and is in this packet. And that was the end of the changes on striking out of this budget policy packet. Did anyone have any objections to any of the striking? Okay. Greg, I'm sorry, city attorney.
Thank you. I just, I want to make, I want to clarify one piece, so that, I'm understanding correctly, when you were talking about striking opioid settlement balances as a reference in the carryforward section, I, we are still, I think we are still expecting to receive money, and we still have money in those funds. I don't mind if this is stricken, I just want to make sure that it's clear, we're not, the city's not done receiving that money, and that's essentially, it's not exact, it's not exactly a restrict, well, the city treats it as a restricted account, it's not an enterprise account, but it's basically a restricted account, because the money has to be used in certain areas. And so I just want to make sure what the intention is behind the reference.
I think the way that this was worded was the money that, I think this was referencing that first batch of money, which was satisfied, because it was specific to, specific to the carryforwards, which were introduced in January.
Okay. I, okay, we will, I mean, Jake can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we will continue to be requesting that these be carried forward, just because it's basically restricted money from the city's perspective. We can't, we cannot let it revert to general fund.
So, if, oh, sorry, if I may, offer at the consent of the chair, so overall, I think this section relates to the project basis to the project basis of the, the opioid funds and other capital funds that crosses over fiscal years, and so what this provision allows us to do is for capital projects that are between fiscal years or opioid funding projects that might be ongoing on an active basis, we don't necessarily have to put a halt to those while we wait for the final balances to settle through the auditing process and make our best guess at a particular time. This provision allows us to say, we have this much balance for the overall project, even if it goes into the next fiscal year, we can till, we can still continue it to the end. If that makes sense to you, it's, but it's up to City Council, this is your appropriation, how you want to approach that.
I guess we can keep that one in there for now, if it's going to be ongoing. I don't see any harm. Councilman Jackson?
It's a different request for an amendment, not on this, not on that one, so a different one.
Okay. Councilman Spatafor?
If we're keeping that, would it make sense to keep the charter? I mean, the charter commission one, then two is, or do we expect, we don't expect them to wrap up their work entirely by the end of this fiscal year?
No, and I think that that's probably a, a smart move, because they're, I, I don't know that they'll make it all the way with the money that they have.
Okay.
So yeah, I would, I would agree with Councilman Spatafor to leave it how, pretty much how it is right now.
Yeah.
Other than changing dates for the following year.
Yeah, the City Attorney made a compelling case.
Yeah. Okay. And then Councilman Jackson?
Thank you. On environmental stewardship, I think there should be an amendment that kind of replaces some old language with some like, kind of future language. It's 69 of 82.
Thank you.
Second paragraph, it's short. So, "Environmental stewardship. The City of Lansing is concerned about its environment and strives to be a good steward of such. The city recognizes the importance of sustainability and supports the Paris Agreement." I would like to offer to strike, "supports the Paris Agreement," and add "the need to act." So, "The city recognizes the importance of sustainability and the need to act." Because honestly, I don't believe our city does follow the Paris Agreement. It is unfortunate, but like, time to act on that has kind of moved on, and nobody's really done anything about it. So let's take that out. I mean, our nation doesn't follow it either, for that matter, and let's just put "the need to act." And I see a typo on the last sentence where it says, "The city recognizes to reduce." I think it might be, "The city recognizes the need to reduce." I did author this a few years ago, and those are just an amendment I would like to make. I would move to make those, that amendment. I guess it doesn't require a motion, so.
No. I don't think we need, we don't need a motion. If anyone, I, does anyone have any issues with any of those changes? Okay. And we will make those changes to this. And that is the end of the business at 6:35.